Welcome to the Easton School Committee Meeting of Thursday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Because we are in a virtual meeting, you may send in questions on the Q and A and we will try to get to them at the appropriate time. I think that's all I have to say. And all votes will be taken by roll call. We have minutes to approve or whatever of Thursday, April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Has everybody had a chance to look these over and are there any questions, comments, corrections? No? Do I have a motion to accept these minutes?
Wiseman, so moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so Wiseman, the motion, and Durant's the second, and now we take a vote to approve the minutes. Caroline, you gotta get closer to your speaker. Maybe not.
Can you hear me?
Yes, okay. O'Neal, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Durant's, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you very much. So those minutes are accepted. Thank you. All right. Next, discussion and possible vote to support resolution of increased federal support and stimulus funding public K through twelve education. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. We were in receipt of a resolution, legislative resolution from Boston School Committee, and we drafted that from the lens of the Easton Public Schools, and you were sent a copy of that, and this is an opportunity for you to discuss the resolution, and if so, interested in forwarding to our state legislators to take a vote on that.
Does anyone have any comments or corrections or any, anything at all on this resolution? I think it's very, you know, there's a lot in there, but I like it.
I think it was, it's well-written, and I don't have any suggested edits or additions to it.
I do not. I agree.
I think it's, it covers a lot. I think it's really good. Thank you for doing this.
Yes, exactly. Caroline, any comments?
I don't know where to go.
I was making comments. You're still not hearing me?
I'm asking you if you have any comments.
I'm talking.
Okay, go ahead.
The volume is top volume.
We can hear you. We can.
We can hear you.
Yeah, when you lean forward, we can hear you.
Okay, I hate that. Okay, I wanted to say that it's too bad you can't read it, that it would take about a half an hour for you to read it, so I, I don't have, but I do think it's a good resolution.
So, Dr. Cabral or Chrissy, anybody, can this be put on, if we accept it, can this be put on the EPS website?
Yes, and we can forward it to our state legislators.
Definitely, yes. Yeah, that would be great. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept this resolution and have it posted and sent to our legislators in hope of getting some much-needed funds because of this COVID pandemic. I'm gonna make that motion.
Wiseman's second.
All those in favor? Okay, O'Neal said yes. I saw her lips move.
Durant's, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you very much, everybody. Okay, awesome. All right, next, COVID nineteen update.
So we'll end with an academic update from Assistant Superintendent Chrissy Pruitt. I will just say that truly we've been holding the course in terms of our buildings. We are still awaiting the Monday or May eighteenth release from the Governor's Subcommittee of Potential Reopening and Repopulation of Public Buildings. We're waiting for that in terms of setting our guidance for staff and students to come and retrieve any personal items or school supplies that they might have from schools, and for having our school custodians all go back to their regular schedules. Right now, they're on split schedules and coming in during the day, and we need to very soon resume the schedules that take them through the night so that we can start our, our preparations that we usually do in the spring and the summer for the next school year, regardless of what that's gonna look like. We have to get our buildings ready. And so that is imminent, I believe, but again, it's of course going to depend on the repopulation plan that comes from the Governor's Office. Other than that, we are continuing our grab-and-go. We have applied for permission to continue that through the summer. We do not know if that will be granted. You, you do need to complete an application process for that. We have not qualified for summer meal distribution in the past, so we don't know if under the circumstances we'll be able to. So we will let people know about that when we hear back about any potential funding. And in terms of repopulation of the building or what September will look like, again, we ha, and this actually is gonna run into the next item, which is a budget update. We participated in Massachusetts Education Committee's hearing yesterday. There was a Mass Association of School Superintendent and Mass Association of School Business Officers joint meeting today. Basically, we're hearing what people are hearing on television, which is a whole lot of, we don't know yet. So unfortunately, we do not have any further information. We, I know everyone wants to know what's going to happen in September. We, believe me, we're amongst the, the front of that pack. We will be ready for whatever it is, but we do not have any indication yet. The two agenda items, COVID nineteen and budget, are intricately and intimately linked to one another. What kind of recovery we experience is really going to determine if we're going to have school in the fall or not. It depends if we are going to have a resurgence of COVID, for example, once businesses and public buildings reopen. It depends what kind of consumer confidence there is and how quickly the economy bounces back, or if they will, you know, we've talked about the alphabet soup already, whether it's a V recovery, a W, an L, a U. We, of course, are hoping for a V recovery or the quickest type of economic recovery, which would hopefully get people back to work and hopefully get our students and teachers back to work. But again, the, the virus rules at this point, and so we are learning from other countries in the world, as well as states in our union, of, of what their reopening plans are looking like and what it's resulting in, and we are at some point going to be testing the waters here. And so we really, unfortunately, just have to wait and see what is going to happen. So unfortunately, the, the bottom line is what I, we're hearing, what we're sitting through hours and hours of testimony to hear is that there is no definitive answer yet about what the fall will look like if we're gonna have summer school camps for children, things like that. In what we have decided to do is for our E S Y program, which is our extended-year program, for students who have I E Ps so that they can continue their learning over the summer. We are continuing that virtually. We already made that call. We're not waiting to see if buildings will be repopulated at that point, or if we can have things in person. We are already planning for that virtually so that we could have a definitive mode to prepare for. So that has already been on that. And just so that people know, I'm not sure if this is COVID-related, budget-related, somewhere in the middle, but all of our normal planning activities for next year are still continuing. So for example, all of our teachers are planning for student schedules at the high school and middle school. The, the administration is planning for those schedules. And at the elementary schools, all of the teachers have schedules right now where they're planning student placement for next year. So those things are all continuing while online learning is continuing. The teachers are doing quite a bit, as we've been saying. The educators have been very, very busy. And so all of those things will be ready and we'll release them as we have them. And other than that, if Assistant Superintendent Pruitt has updates from the academic side of things with COVID nineteen, go right ahead.
Now, can I just ask something first, Dr. Cabral? So I was watching part of that hearing as well, and it, it sounded like they were working on not only what school could look like when it opens, but having a plan for if during the school year we needed to go back to some type of remote learning, so it's not a last-minute, you know, trying to pull things together type of plan, that they recognize that this could be the way it's gonna be for a while, and that they're gonna try to come up with more of, more guidance, recognizing that right now what's happening among the state in different districts is, is very varied. And even, they said, within certain school districts within schools, it's very varied. And so they're trying to look at the best practices going forward. It is frustrating to have to wait, 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 wait. But hopefully, they will come out soon. And I think the, the M A S S, it was the president of the M A S S? That was, he, I thought he did a really good job of articulating what, what districts are really looking for and what they need to know and what they're struggling with right now.
Yes, in that sense, it was very validating. We have a wonderful president right now that represents us on the Mass Association of School Superintendents, and it was very validating that he is hearing our concerns and he is channeling that information both to the legislature and to the Department of Education. And I feel as though he did a very good job of that again today. And it sounds like it's being heard. It's just that people don't have answers for it yet.
Right.
And similarly to what you just said, people are really considering how to pivot now from a purely reactive stance, which is what we've been operating under, because of course, nobody really predicted this at all, to a more proactive stance, but in a very short period of time. So it's going to be interesting to see when we can get that guidance. Of course, we are pushing forward the sense of urgency. But again, we understand why there's a lack of information, and we're trying to be patient as well, but we are very antsy for some sort of guidance because, you know, what we don't wanna do is invest time and money and resources that we don't really have right now in a direction that is going to be mandated to change in the future. So we're just trying to get a little bit more guidance.
Okay, Chrissy?
Actually, I think Caroline is going to say something.
Okay, Caroline.
Trying my best here. I have no idea. This is one of your Chromebooks, by the way, that is not giving me my volume. I just wanted to say that the people that are making these decisions don't know yet either. We keep waiting for other people to make these decisions, but honestly, the virus, as I talked about last time, is gonna basically determine what our next steps are. Because it's evolving and moving so rapidly, there's no, you know, there's really no way for anyone to be able to make a, a completely responsible, accurate decision this early before the school year starts. So I know we're antsy, but I, I think we can't really blame the, those who are going to make the final determination because they're as clueless as we are about what's gonna happen in the next couple of months with the virus.
Thank you.
No question.
As I said.
Right.
Can you hear anything?
Yeah, we appreciate you. Thank you, Caroline. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Chrissy.
Yeah, and I just, I just wanna echo that too, that, you know, we are, Massachusetts especially, is taking the opportunity to learn from the other countries that are going through this, that are reopening. That, I know that the Commissioner had a meeting today with his board to discuss coming out with, with further guidelines. And while it's all very preliminary, it is definitely, they're, they're looking at other, other countries and, and other places that are opening. So I, I do feel fortunate that this happened at a time where we do have the summer months coming up, and other countries will be reopening, so we, we have the opportunity to learn from them. So I do find that to be fortunate if this were to happen to us. I wanted to share with you that we have been getting wonderful feedback from families. We have been conducting surveys at P K to two was one family survey, three to five was, we shared a survey. The middle school shared a survey this past week, and Oliver Ames at the high school will be sharing a survey for families soon for, to provide feedback for the remote learning. At the next school committee meeting, I will be presenting a report on the, the status of remote learning as far as how, what the feedback has been and any other areas that, that to report out on. So I just wanted to give you that update. One of the things, though, is that families are providing us with remarkable feedback. It's, it's been very helpful for us. For example, a parent had emailed us saying we were putting out the P K to five remote learning plans at noon on, I'm sorry, at five o'clock on Sundays. And the reason for that is the curriculum leaders have them uploaded by Friday, and then that gives the administrators and myself a couple days to look them over, reformat if need be, ask questions. And so then we had until Sunday at five to get that work done, to look at all of the, all of the, the remote learning plans. However, now that we're in a nice swing, a, a nice flow, we realize that we can get this, this work done quicker. And so the remote learning plans will be published by Sunday at noon. So that is, that has been direct feedback from parents. I went to the curriculum leaders and the administrators and asked if they thought that that was reasonable, and everybody agreed that since we are in a good flow, that we can up the time for publication of those remo, remote learning plans. So I just want to commend the families that are providing us suggestions. If they're frustrated or they see a solution, they are providing that to us because we are listening, and it is making our process better. So I really just appreciate that and wanted to, wanted to say that and stress to everyone listening to please provide that feedback for us. We really, really appreciate it. The other thing is, we have four weeks, four full weeks left. I can't stress enough to families how important engagement is. I know, you know, with the nicer weather, I know that kids are tired of sitting at home. You know, I was listening to, to a, a meeting today where the, the administrator talked about how it's really important for us to be separating, for social-emotional well-being of our, of our kids, to separate home from work, and right now, that's very blurred. And so I think it's important that we, as parents, have to really stay on our children to the best of our ability and check that they're doing the work. We don't want, you know, of course, we, they need breaks, they need some modifications, you know, at, at times for sure. However, we don't want them to just become disengaged with the work. Right now, the new learning is taking place. We are introducing, thankfully, we didn't have that many new, that, that much new learning to occur, but it is taking place, and we can't risk our kids missing that. So please, and to everyone, if you could please continue that message, that would be great. We have been receiving some feedback from teachers. That engagement is starting to drop off, so we are ramping up our communications with families to ensure that communication does continue. I mean, that engagement continues and completion of work. Four weeks, we got it. We can do it, you know, four weeks left and a couple days. And then also, you know, just to reiterate about the state, they are also, they have been doing a survey. I just completed the survey for Easton around remote learning. They're gathering feedback. I think when we think about if this were to happen again, and we are to stay home again, this time it happened at a, at a convenient time of the year. A lot of our standards were covered as far as learning. We didn't have much more, much new teaching to do when the power standards came out. But if this does happen again, come the fall or even the winter, we will definitely have to ramp up the learning that goes on, online. And so we are definitely looking at that. We'll be meeting with the curriculum coordinators to talk about how do we, when we come back in the fall, how are we addressing the gaps that we might find? How are we measuring student progress or trying to identify those gaps? So those are all the things that we're working on. There's a lot going on. Our teachers, I have to tell you, you know, I popped into some meetings this week, and they are literally at their computers from eight o'clock in the morning until four, five o'clock at night. And some of them have adjusted because our older kids, they sleep later. And so they're adjusting their times. They're doing their own, you know, one teacher in particular I was talking to has her own children from eight to twelve, doing remote learning with them. And then from one to seven has her off, has her time with the students. And so, you know, our teachers are making adaptations. They're accommodating our kids. They're, they're just, they're absolutely remarkable. I could talk forever about this, so I'm going to stop here. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a couple of questions, actually.
Sure.
So first of all, I just wanna say, some of the surveys that went out, they went out before the remote learning turned into teaching new material, too. So I would be interested to hear from families how they're dealing with that. And I do have a couple of questions about the remote learning and learning new material because my understanding was that there were gonna be a little more videos from teachers instead of, rather just, than just slides and YouTube videos. And what I'm hearing and what I'm finding is that the reason, one of the reasons engagement may be dropping is because everyone's tired at this point. This has been going on for a while, and now they're learning new material, but they're learning it from slides and YouTube videos and not necessarily directly from the teachers. And while the teachers have office hours, which we are very grateful for, there's, they're not significantly long, or they, they're broken up during the week by short periods of time. And if you get an office hour where you have several children asking for help, they may not be able to get through all the material that they need. And so my suggestion or question would be, going forward, if they're gonna be learning new material, is there a way to have more direct videos from teachers helping to explain it? Because, for example, my child can read a slide over and over again about how to turn a sentence with a simile into a sentence with a metaphor, but it, it is very difficult to learn it just by reading the slide and not having some kind of an engagement. And I think it's difficult for parents in a lot of respects to try to teach their kids, help teach their kids the new material, because the child is tired, the parent is tired. There isn't always a great learning relationship that way. And I think parents are getting a little frustrated by, by this aspect of the remote learning. And I don't know if there's a way to address that or fix that or help with it or not, but I think that that's, that's been an issue that is really kind of driving some parents to, it's, it's, it's very difficult for some parents to deal with and to kind of handle. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on that.
So I do know that some of the slides that you're referring to, my understanding has been that there have been voice-overs from teachers in some instances. So at different, different grade levels, you know, that's feedback that I will definitely share with the curriculum leaders and the administrators and gather more information on. I do think it's important to, at the end of the year, have an, have a district-wide survey, you know, for, to, to gain more information from the whole actual process. I think that's, that's great. You know, all the different phases of the remote learning to kind of compare the data. But I do think that, you know, it is, it does vary. And if a video wasn't provided, the, the teachers may not have realized the importance of the video for that particular concept. And so, you know, I, I also want to say, please reach out to the teachers and to the administrators or principals in the buildings because they can help direct that, too. The, yeah, so I think that that's, that's good, very good feedback for us. And, you know, sometimes the teachers, what we're, what we encourage the curriculum leaders is when you look at the power standards, this is a great opportunity to kind of create a bank of resources for the standards. So creating videos, you know, gathering videos, gather, you know, create, like I, like I just said, creating videos where if this does happen again, and they do have to address that standard, that bank is there for the future, and it, and it is a good opportunity. So if you're not seeing, or if parents aren't seeing actual teachers, remember, it won't necessarily be your child's individual teacher. It could be another teacher or another teacher's voice. Our teachers have been working fabulously as teams, and they have been kind of divvying up tasks simply due to the fact of what's going on in their own homes. So some teachers may have more capability to produce videos where other teachers can't necessarily do that because of various things going on, whether they're taking care of a sick, a, a loved one or their children are, are, you know, running around rampant. There's various situations for that. So I think that people will see it at various levels. I know that, you know, I think there are other parents will say, we have so much, so many videos. So we are seeing a variety.
Okay, thank you.
I, I will add that it's important to remember that we are seeing what's happening behind the scenes that people aren't seeing. A lot of parents are maybe seeing the product that goes out and the in-person meetings, but nothing else. I can guarantee you, I can't even get into all of the meetings because there are three, four at a time all throughout the district where they're all meeting with one another. We have just asked people to completely change the way they deliver business. That's a lot for them to learn how to do, too. Some of them have never used online platforms before like this. They certainly have never recorded themselves. I mean, I was just gonna use Caroline as an example, but I don't want her to be offended. I'm just saying, if you were writing lessons, if, if you were writing, well, they're using our equipment, too.
Exactly.
That's what we have. And so are our students. So, you know, we're using equipment that is not the most up-to-date. In fact, I am, I, I'm down to my basement right now because I literally, I took home a Chromebook from school, and it's not working for me either. So it, that's what we have, right? We don't have a procurement plan. We've been behind for years. So it's technology. It is also, we have every teacher in every grade level working together. So for example, grade one, you've got twelve teachers from three different schools working together remotely to come up with plans, videos, lessons, assessments. And they have to do it to, they have to, to put it all out at the same time together. That requires so much coordination, you know, that they just didn't do before. If they just had to their own little world and they were doing it, these people are professionals. They bang it out all the time. But we flipped this whole thing on its head. So I can assure you, we'll share a screenshot of the Google Calendar. You'll be like, Skittles commercial with all the different colors on it of every different meeting. These pe, you know, there's really a lot involved. It's not an excuse. We're still working on it, and we will get better. And we, I, I feel like we've gotten light years better from when we began. What I don't think you'll see is, is a lot of the office hour stuff because, again, we have students that won't be able to come to certain office hours. What does that mean for those kids? They can't participate? What about the teacher that's working until noon with her own students? There are many of those. But what about kids that are sharing devices at home and their parents need it during the workday and they get it at night? We can't, we can't disenfranchise those kids. It has to be equity of access to everybody. And that's something that we're struggling with because while it might work well for some people, we have to remember that there's a real, real rainbow of situations for people. And whatever we offer, based on frankly, Massachusetts regulations, never mind our own attempt at trying to make things equitable for kids, just from an ethics perspective, it's very difficult to suit, suit twenty different situations in a video. So, you know, I have heard, well, can't they just do like a ten-minute thing with each kid once a week even, or twice a week? Well, add that up for twenty kids, and then remember that they have to plan, and then remember that they're doing remote learning with their own kids, and then remember that they have team meetings, staff meetings, meetings with us. It's, it is a lot. It's a lot. And like I said, we're still learning, but we threw all these people out there with no training or preparation whatsoever. Talk about on-the-job training. Talk about, you know, I can throw a million analogies, flying the plane while building it and all that. So I know- I know what we'd all like to see, but if there's a reason, I mean, if it's not happening just yet, there's a reason for that. We actually have some other colleagues that are telling us about some synchronous learning activities that just aren't working. There's not. A school can say they have it, um, but is it successful? And that's, that's what we're vetting, um, as we're doing it. So we're, and the other thing I want to point out is. Our teachers are planning one to two weeks from now today. They're not planning right now. So even when we are able to give them feedback. Um, you know, we have to give them time to incorporate it into what they're doing. But as Chrissy said earlier, we can't get better without feedback from people who are consuming.
Right.
Lessons. So I can't tell you how valuable it, it has been and how it really has made us shift. Directions that we've been going on things. So whether it is through a survey or whether it's reaching out to a principal. I can assure you that we're reading everything and we are having conversations about it regularly and we, we're able to incorporate it in. So. We really appreciate all of the engagement we've gotten from parents who have, who have really said, you know, this is working, this isn't working, can you try this? It's been very helpful and we appreciate them taking the time to do that when they don't have much time either.
Yeah, and I think we all recognize how difficult this has been and how hard the teachers are working and this certainly is not any kind of a criticism. It's just kind of thinking going forward.
Feedback, it's helpful feedback.
Yeah. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for either Dr. Cabral or Chrissy Brewett? Okay, thank you. Um. Next is budget update. Dr. Cabral. You're on mute.
Well, I might as well be because I don't really have any new information. Um, as I said, we attended those hearings this week. Um, all of you can hear from press conferences and news releases, there just is no information yet. The uh, virus still rules and until we know what's happening with. The virus and the economy, we will not really have an understanding yet of any figures. We are continuing at this point to go forward with a presumed eight percent loss in our uh. State funding. And so that, that's, as I said before. What I'm sharing with the leadership team is we're planning for what we can reasonably expect and then pivoting when we need to. So that could change tomorrow, next week, uh, frankly, that could change in September. Uh, so we. Basically, uh, expect we're going to have a one twelfth budget in July. I can't even imagine how. There could be a budget before then, but we'll see. We do have the joint meeting on Monday. With the select board, school committee and finance committee. It's going to be a lot of the same thing. But hopefully after the executive session that we had. At the last meeting and this one will have a little bit more direction in terms of what uh. Things we may need to eliminate, restructure, cut and so forth because that is basically what it's coming down to. Uh, we cannot endure a, a five percent cut to what we had hoped to receive this year. Without significant um, regression. Because we certainly were at a bare minimum anyway, after years of cutting, cutting, cutting. And this is going to reflect the largest cut of all, of course. I did meet with the union leadership of our seven district uh, units yesterday. It was really just information giving, so it, it's not like we had uh, too much of a give and take. I answered questions, they always have very good questions and I answered them. Their meeting with their respective units and um, will let me know if they have any information to share with us. But the way that it stands right now. Uh, I did share with them sort of the, the information I just shared that. We are about to have an executive session tonight and hopefully shore up different areas that we might focus. Uh, our priorities on and that we would share that with them as soon as we knew what we were going to do and of course with the public as well. So we have the joint meeting on Monday and then of course we have a tentative town meeting scheduled for June twenty second. We're still waiting for. Guidance, of course, on whether that can be held, how that can be held, uh, and so forth. So unfortunately. A whole lot of not sure.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions at this time? And um, Chrissy or Alicia, has anything come in over the questions and answers? Okay. Thank you. All right. Discuss, the next up, discussion and vote to appoint school committee representatives to town boards. Um, okay. So we, I believe everybody got the email from Danielle Sicard. And uh, about, you know, continuing our roles on different boards. Um, the ones that need to be approved. Our audit committee, budget subcommittee, human rights committee and municipal building committee. Then that's just with the town and then we have our own committees that were on off of uh, different things. Okay. So on the audit committee, I believe it is Jennifer Starr. Jennifer, would you, would you like to stay? Is this how we do it Caroline? Can I just ask or do we have to nominate? What do you think? Should we just do, can we just?
You can ask if people still want to serve and then. No, no.
All right. So Jen, do you want to stay on the audit committee?
I would be happy to, but if somebody else wanted to uh, take a turn on that, I wouldn't fight over it. So. But I'm happy to do it if nobody else wants it.
No one ever fights over the audit committee.
I don't imagine.
I nominate Jen again.
Okay, so Jen, thank you very much. All right. Michelle.
I'm sorry?
Just say Durant's yes.
Durant's yes, I'm sorry.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Okay, so Jen will stay on as audit committee. So at some point you have to let Jen, I don't know how this is going to work. I don't know if anybody has any information. If you have to contact um, Danielle. I didn't get, I don't know how they're putting people in office right now, so I don't know what the answer is to that. Okay.
Nancy?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, before you continue, I just thought I, I might get ahead of it for a second. Um, public comment is coming up. And so if anyone who is in the public is in attendance would like to. Start writing anything in the Q and A box, now would be a good time to do that, um, because. They may not have time when we get to public comment and this way we can make sure we capture any questions that they have. It'll be coming in a couple minutes.
Thank you very much. All right, budget subcommittee right now is Caroline and Jackie. Are you both still interested on serving on the budget subcommittee? For this year coming up?
Yes.
Okay, um, so let's vote on that.
Durant's yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Okay, so we will do that. All right. Human rights committee, I believe that is Michelle, yes. Michelle, are you still willing to serve on the human rights committee?
I would like to stay unless somebody wants it.
Okay, I don't see hands flying, so you got it. Go ahead, Miss. Go ahead, we need your vote.
I nominate Michelle to remain on the human rights committee.
So yeah, yes, all right, go ahead. Second, go ahead.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant's yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Okay, and then the municipal building committee. So. We have two appointees, I'm on that and Jane Martin. So she is our. School committee appointee to be on the municipal building committee. So I'm willing to stay on that. Um, actually I think there, well, it doesn't matter. I'm willing to stay on that. And I would have to check with Jane, right, to see if she wants to stay on it.
Uh, yeah, we could do that. I think the rea-, the, the reasoning behind that was because since she's chair of the school planning committee. It made sense to have her on municipal building committee as well.
Absolutely. And we're, all of us, I mean, this is just, these are four committees right here. And we have pages of committees, so we're all, we're all doing something.
Nancy, I see Jane as a participant or an attendee. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask this vote.
To ask Jane if she would like to stay on the municipal building committee. So if she wants to, oh, there she is. Can we unmute? Jane?
Yes.
Nancy DeLuca here. Would you like to continue to be on the municipal building committee as the school committee appointee?
Yes, I would be happy to stay on the municipal building committee as a school committee appointee. However, um, I do want to mention that, uh, and I, because I don't know the status. There may be a warrant article on the upcoming town budget related to the role of the municipal building committee. Related to the school planning committee and depending on that warrant article. Um, um, I may at some point resign from municipal building committee, just as a heads up, but for now.
Yeah, go ahead. But that, thank you. And because Danielle is trying to get everything done by June thirtieth, I believe. I, I, I'm not sure what the timeline is. So thank you very much. So I move that Jane Martin stay on the municipal building committee.
Second that.
Okay, can we have a vote, please?
Durant's yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Thank you very much. Now.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Oh, I thought we were all in this together, okay.
So as the host, I was able to unmute um. Jane, but I'm going to mute her back. So ju-, does any, is that okay? You're welcome. I'm going to mute her again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let's vote on my uh, being on the.
That we keep Nancy DeLuca on the municipal building committee.
Second, Wiseman, second.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant's yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Okay, so that was for the town boards. Do you want to hold off on the, just. On the um, assignments that we have now? Do you want to just leave them as is for now? And once we get back to normal, we'll figure it out.
Do we need to just vote to continue as is?
I would say yes. Do you want to make that motion?
I make a motion that we all continue within the committees that we're on.
Wiseman, second.
Second, okay, let's vote on that, please.
Durant's yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
All right, thank you very much. So, um, we'll continue to be in touch with Danielle Sicard and. Figure out how we're going to be doing this uh, swearing in and all that. Okay. Next, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one schedule of school committee meetings, second reading. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for the uh, December thing. Hopefully I'm going to be. On my vacation, but we'll see. Okay. Any other corrections or things you want to add or delete or change times or days or anything else? Do I have a motion to accept, accept the schedule of school committee meetings for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one?
So moved, Wiseman.
Second Durant's.
Okay, Caroline, you gotta get in. Okay.
This is your Chromebook.
So let's, let's vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant's yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Okay. Jen, Jen? We need to.
Starr, yes.
Thank you, okay. All right, so all set with the school committee meetings, put them in your calendar and hopefully we'll be back at. Simmons Lecture Hall and fifty Oliver Street and things will get back to normal. Okay. Next is public comment. Chrissy, what do we have?
Yes, we have one from Fred Olmstead. Just a reminder that the contactless food drive is being held on Monday, May eighteenth. From nine o'clock AM to eleven o'clock AM in the front of the Richardson Olmstead School.
Thank you for that reminder. Okay, um, superintendent notes.
Thank you, just a few things here. So I did want to. Uh, one of the meetings we had today was what was with the town elections. Staff, including Danielle Sicard and, and many others. And we are, um, want to make sure that people know that we are. Definitely preparing for elections at both the town hall and at Oliver Ames. We're taking all precautions. We're really trying to plan in advance, make sure everything is as sanitary as possible, making sure we uh, are able to observe. Appropriate social distancing. We're looking at all the facilities and the protocols. So, uh, Mr. Card did a great job today organizing that. We also had our senior projects yesterday and today. Very. Uh, very well done despite the circumstances, of course. Uh, you know, we're big fans of this uh. Course offered by Mr. Goldberg's senior project. And I'm always thrilled to be invited to, to be a panelist on that. And I was fortunate to do that today for three outstanding senior students. And I know some of you participated in that yesterday and maybe today as well. So I wanted to congratulate Mr. Goldberg and all of his seniors for. Really, uh, you know, we always say there are great life lessons. That we uh, know that this course teaches in addition to whatever topic they've decided to pursue. And certainly we saw that today with examples of perseverance and communication and disappointment. Uh, two out of the three students that I uh, actually was able to, to meet with today. Were unable to actually hold their final fundraising event after putting in an entire semester of working on it. So. You know, you can imagine the, the sense of frustration, but they were wonderful, super resilient, very positive. Very reflective about what they learned and as always, I'm just incredibly, incredibly proud of them. So we thank them and congratulate them on, on jobs well done. I also, uh, I also wanted to say that we are looking to make a minor adjustment to the school calendar. Lynn's going to work on that and we'll send it to you for next year. That is only for uh, kindergarten and pre-K. Because they typically get out earlier, we just want to make sure that we're sending out the information. We'll have a new calendar to show people. We're not actually changing dates for any staff or anything. Um, we're just. Offering the lessons right until the last day of school for K and pre-K, just like every other grade. We usually have about five days depending on P K or P K at the end of the year to do um, some can, we. To have the kindergarten teachers do kindergarten screening for the next year's incoming kindergarten class. And obviously, we cannot do that because that is something that is required to do, to be done in person. And so we have to come up with a contingency plan for that and it certainly will not be the last week of Ju-, uh, the last week of school. So teachers will be preparing those lessons right up until the last day. And I did receive a call, a call from Representative Cronin today. She was asking about uh, an IT bond that is being submitted tomorrow and I did share with her that we were in great need of Caroline. Chromebooks and, and also hotspots. We had several students that we were unable to hook up with hotspots so that they could get on, it's a device to be able to get online if they don't have internet service in their home. We didn't, we don't have very many at all. All the ones we have are out and then uh. Uh, we were fortunate that servers like Comcast, for example, are offering free service throughout the school closure. But of course, we don't expect that will last forever. And so we do need to increase our number of hotspots, especially if we are going to be. Having any sort of remote learning in the fall. And obviously the Chromebooks. We've had over two hundred and fifty requests for Chromebooks. We have distributed them and we are continuing, as this closure continues. We are continuing to get, you know, ten, twelve requests a day. So as the, as the assignments are ramping up a bit, we're finding that, you know, and, and meetings are being held during the day. We're finding lots of different situations. Um, like I mentioned earlier, parents who need their device or devices during the day. To conduct their business from home. Now students are having to be part of some classes during the day. So we continue to get those requests. These are, you know, not a bank of loners that we have. These are, you know, not a bank of loners that we have. This, these is, this is our fleet that we use for day-to-day instruction, for our standardized testing. And so naturally, there are concerns going forward about having enough devices. But uh obviously, we don't have a choice at this point and we wanna make sure everybody has equity of access. And so we continuing to to give those out, uh but I certainly uh appreciate the opportunity to share our need, excuse me, share our need for Chromebooks, both Chromebooks and hotspots for our students to be able to to access their remote learning. And I think that's it. I already told you about the hearings that we attended, so I believe that's it for me for for tonight.
Thank you.
We do have a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So the question is from Jane Martin. Can you clarify the FY budget reduction? I know that nothing is clear yet, however, can you provide some clarification? Is it expected that there will be any increase to the FY twenty-one budget over the FY twenty budget? Will the FY twenty-one budget be more than the FY twenty budget? I realize that if there is any increase in the FY twenty-one, that it will not come close to meeting our needs. Even more regressive, but I'm just trying to understand some sense of the proportion of regressive we are talking about. Sorry for the length.
Okay, no, that's a, that's a great question. This is severe regression, severe regression. So without anything else, meaning without any knowledge of any sort of um collective bargaining concessions or federal stimulus money or a change in state revenue projections, we are trying to come in at the same budget as last year. That is with over three perc- percent uh increase in our collective bargaining contracts as well as our vendor contracts. Uh wastewater treatment plant, um transportation, out of district, you know, we have, we have vendor contracts as well. They typically run, you know, anywhere between two to three, four percent a year, depending on the industry and depending on past contracts. So we have over a three percent increase just for level service from last year. And as of right now, the, our goal to help the town meet the two point four million dollar deficit right now in the town's budget, we need to get as close to FY twenty as possible. So if we are not changing any contractual obligations, then obviously that's a great deal of money. It's uh approximately a million dollars that we need to shave from our budget. And so it is, we don't know exactly yet because we are waiting for a little bit more information, but I can unfortunately report that it will result in layoffs. There's no question about that. Uh it's how many layoffs at this point and where those layoffs will be that we are working on. But we are already sharing this information with staff members that may be affected because uh well, from an ethical perspective, it it is the right thing to do. We certainly don't wanna lose them. But the way that our industry runs on a school year basis, we can't leave people without the opportunity to secure employment elsewhere if they need to for their family. We do not, this, this is our, this is our hiring season. So, you know, we do not have the luxury in our line of work really to apply for a job midsummer and certainly not September, October. So um so that's why we are a little bit ahead of what is perhaps being done at the at the uh town side because they're ti- they are typically working with twelve-month employees and have a different sort of timeframe for when they need to notify people. So we're, we're unfortunately, um our timeline is a bit escalated because of that. I hope that answers the question. It is severely regressive. It's the most regressive since I've been here in seven years.
So the comment said, thank you, from Jane Martin, thank you for being so comprehensive in your answer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, assistant, are you all set, Dr. Cabral? With your co- with your notes?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Um Assistant Superintendent Notes, Chrissy?
I was also going to talk about the senior projects. Uh it was an honor to serve yesterday as a judge or a critique for the the three students that I observed. Uh Craig Goldberg's class is just such a fabulous, fabulous class and the three that I uh was involved with, their focus was on various aspects of music and just how important music is um today, so in during this time. So it was really, it was very um nice to see that. But they really do such a fa- fabulous job and I never ever thought that I would be giving critique on how to present virtually. So I feel like an expert now. Although I need to
Let's not invite critiques of us, please.
No, no, but I felt, you know, it was, it was quite interesting, but the three students that I had were absolutely fabulous and they, you know, are really the he, Mr. Goldberg really promotes such a positive giving back to society in their projects and that was clearly seen through the three that that I observed. So job well done, Mr. Goldberg. Um I also wanted to let you know that uh the Student Opportunity Act, as I'm sure you are aware of, we are supposed to be submitting plans for that and they, due to the, we, there was a, there was a plan that was supposed to be submitted April first and then it was delayed to May fifteenth. Because of the circumstances, those are delayed until further notice. Submission of the plans and what we would use the money for, remember, we would be receiving extremely minimal money in comparison, and I think they put that all on hold because of they're not, they're, they're still unsure about what the allocations will be due to the current um crisis, budget crisis within the state. And then lastly, I just wanted to share that we are, the, the u- universities around us are reaching out about placing practicum students. And it was, it, I received one email in communications with, for example, Stonehill. They are looking at, re-looking at how they are doing practicums. One of the things that they shared with us was the technology expertise, that some of their students would be able to help with our teachers. So we're looking into that. Uh we do find it very valuable to have student teachers in our classrooms. It is a wonderful opportunity, not just for the student teachers, but for our kids. Um it uh helps us target, you know, lower class ratios uh and also just bring such, such great um energy to, to the classrooms as well. So just wanted to update you on those and we are working on that and that's all I have right now, but there is a comment. Oh no, that's all. That was what I had already said. That's it.
Thank you very much, Chrissy and Dr. Cabral. All right, School Committee Notes, Caroline?
I don't think I'm even gonna try.
Okay, okay. Uh Michelle?
I do not have anything.
Okay, I just have, um I wanna thank Anne Weintraub and the volunteers at the Monday uh food drives. I know Ian's up there all the time, but there's volunteers at the Monday food drive up at RO. Thank you. And just to everybody that, you know, parents, teachers, parents, just thank you, everybody is everybody for just getting through this and hopefully, as they say, we're all in this together. And don't forget to fill out your census form. Jackie?
No, I was just gonna talk about the um the hearing um the other day, um but Dr. Cabral covered that pretty much, so I'm all set.
Okay. Jen?
Uh really quick, just um just wanted to highlight um how supportive and helpful um some of the administrative and guidance staff um have been. They're working really hard and have been incredibly responsive to my students who needed uh some things taken care of this week. Um so just wanna give a shout out to, you know, all the educators, the, you know, the teachers, we know, parents are doing a great job, but all the support staff behind the scenes. They're also working really hard and have been um extremely accommodating and helpful, so. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Um go ahead, Chrissy.
We do have a, we do have a comment from Teresa Skinner. CPAC, the, a reminder that there's a CPAC Town Hall Meeting, May twenty-sixth at four PM.
Okay, thank you. And speaking of meetings, now our next get, well, we have the meeting Monday with um the town side. But our next scheduled uh School Committee Meeting is Thursday, May twenty-eighth. But I think we decided a cu- a few weeks ago that we would maybe like to meet every week, so do we wanna meet Thursday, May twenty-first for updates or, I mean, how does everybody feel about that or do we wanna just wait until May twenty-eighth? I'll take anybody's feedback.
Um I, I think it would be if we can, I'm sorry Caroline, go ahead. Caroline, you wanna go?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
I do think it's a good idea to keep meeting weekly, even if it's a very short meeting because I think it's quite possible there will be, you know, updates um frequently going forward.
You can always cancel if you feel as though it's not necessary, but you wouldn't be able to add one last minute if there was something happening.
No, I agree, especially since we're having the big budget meeting on the eighteenth, that might be a good
I agree. Yeah.
Right, so I'm gonna make a motion that our next meeting be Thursday, May twenty-first at five o'clock on Zoom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Our second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Durant's yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Okay, so Lynn, uh Thursday, May twenty-first, again, COVID nineteen update, budget update, and then we'll see if there's anything else on the, on the agenda that we need to add before you have to post it. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session and not to return to um uh regarding pursuant to MGL thirty A to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the Eastern Educators Association Units A, B, and Parrot Professionals and the Southeastern Public Employees Association, Secretary Clerical Unit, Food Service Unit, and Custodial Unit in order to work on the budget. Um and then, and to have that discussion in open meeting would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the School Committee. Do I have a second?
Wiseman, second. I'm sorry, Caroline, go ahead.
All those in favor?
Durant's yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Okay, we will not be returning. Thank you, everybody, for joining us for this School Committee Meeting. Thank you. Now, we're gonna leave and go into the other one, right?
Yes. Thank you.